Keys and to my right is.
Councilman Padilla.
And he represents.
District five.
District five and then we have our attorney. I'll let him introduce himself.
I'm Luther Ganyan, the legal advisor for the police department.
Okay, there we go. Alright, um, we call the meeting to order. Um, if we want to look over our minutes, if you had a chance.
I've moved to approve.
Moved to approve. It's been moved to approve the minutes from July 20th. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, it's been approved unanimously. Uh, we're gonna go right into the reports and follow up from the previous meeting. Um, and I'd like to start with, um, the homeless task force subcommittee. I don't know who wants to, um, come and talk on behalf of that. You will Cory? Okay. Thank everyone for coming. Um, I have a sign up sheet by the back door and if you have not signed up, and please put your contact, either your phone number or your email address. That's very important that we get ahold of you. Um, when we have these meetings, um, so if you have not done that, please do so, even if you're a city employee. That's how I keep track of who's here. Thank you, city manager. Oh, okay Cory, you're on deck.
Okay, um, I submitted a letter, uh, to you guys, uh, early this afternoon and so you have that, uh, in front of you today. I won't read through the letter. I just want to hit on a couple of the highlights. We have had two subcommittee meetings of the homeless task force to talk about this and some other issues. Um, at the last meeting, um, one of the things that the whole committee decided was that if this ordinance or proposed ordinance would come into place, that we would strongly encourage a designated camping area, uh, for the homeless. Uh, we've looked at some other communities. Ventura County actually in California, um, provides actually weather tight tents. And I put a link in the letter to the tents that, uh, they last for 10 years. They're somewhat, um, they don't look bad. So it's not like broken tents and tarps and it would be an area where maybe you could have like a decent looking area with some, um, really weather tight tents for the homeless individuals. They're $2,500. We figured a campsite of 20 to start with, uh, might be a proposed idea. Um, we figured that the community, um, once they hear about this ordinance and the possibility of this designated campsite might come together and fund that initiative, uh, without using, uh, city funds. So that'd be something that we could explore further. We just chatted about that at our last meeting and so we still need to talk to legal about some, uh, legal issues. I haven't made contact with Luther yet about that. Mainly that was the, the biggest item that came out of that subcommittee meeting. So I'll stand for any questions if you have any.
Cory, if you want to go ahead, please, um, and hit on the bullet points because you have to remember there's people that are watching that are not here.
Sure.
And I, I want them to be as formed, as informed as possible.
Okay. Um, the other, uh, items that the subcommittee thought we needed to, uh, kind of look at was, um, that we needed to educate the business owners a little bit more about their property rights that they have as business owners. Uh, whether they can call the police or not call the police. Uh, maybe they don't know that. Um, so that could be addressed. Um, the committee did discuss creating a day center in the downtown area where people could, um, go, um, during the day for maybe a light meal and some activities just to keep them, uh, away from mingling up and down, uh, the downtown area, which I know is a concern. Uh, also it'll give them an opportunity to be in a safe, warm place. Um, we discussed options to, uh, see about getting them, uh, free bus passes so they were able to travel. Uh, maybe that will entice them to get, um, employment or to get to some social service agencies that, um, they need. Um, we, uh, also discussed, um, funding, uh, for the police department to have the outreach officers that you guys have discussed in, uh, creating this homeless outreach and we think that, uh, is deserves, uh, some funding. Um, and then the, uh, last little bullet, I did want to let you know that we did, um, as a panel, a group of us, went to, um, interview some, uh, street homeless individuals and we have that, um, video, not today, but if you're wanting to see what the input is from the actual, uh, people that we're going to be affecting, uh, we'd be happy to bring that maybe to another, another meeting if, if you're interested in that.
I would love to see it. I don't know about, um, committee members.
Okay.
So would I and if I may, if I may, Madam Chair. Cory, without the video, can you give us an idea of, um, maybe the cross-section of people that you, uh, interviewed? And I'm interested in too, are they, uh, I guess, uh, long-term homeless here in Topeka or are they passing through Topeka? Uh, and then maybe a summary of the kinds of things that they think might move them out of that category and give them some other opportunities.
Okay, um, I was actually not one of the people that did the interviews. I would ask either Sergeant Clam or, um, Brett from United Way. I don't know his last name. If one of you guys want to come up.
It's, it's the gentleman looking all around for, for the person that you're calling up.
If one of you want to come up and address that, that would be great.
Thank you. Uh, if the city attorney would like to come up and join us as long, as well as the city manager, that'd be great.
Hi Brett Martin with, uh, United Way of Greater Topeka. Uh, Sergeant Clam and I and Mary Tibbetts from Stormont Vale had an opportunity on Friday morning to visit some homeless camps that Sergeant Clam had identified in Topeka to, uh, gather some input regarding, uh, the potential for a camping ordinance. So we visited, uh, three camps in, uh, the Topeka area, all of which are located along the Kansas River, uh, in some area or another. And we talked with them about, uh, their experiences. I got a little bit of background. And so let me, uh, see if I can, uh, answer your questions as I remember them. In terms of cross-section, there were, uh, individuals who had been, uh, homeless anywhere from sort of three to six months, uh, up to, uh, at least two years in the, uh, information that we gathered. Uh, they did not appear in the conversations that we had to be passing through. Uh, that they were folks who, uh, are here in the community and have been here in the community for some time. So not transient in that way. Uh, we did talk with them about resources, uh, that they, uh, felt like that they would need, uh, to be able to move out of, uh, homelessness. And so we talked with them about something like a designated camping area and then being able to connect them with housing. Those that we talked, uh, to did seem, uh, interested in that. They also indicated that they would be interested in, uh, a designated camping area. And the resources that they talked about primarily were, uh, water access and, uh, someplace with some cover, uh, that was, uh, substantial, whether that's a windbreak or, uh, something that would have, uh, a roof over it in terms of what at least they have now, whether they've constructed that or, um, uh, under an overpass or otherwise.
Did they say what the holdup is for them to move on? You're saying they're passing through, but it seems like they're kind of stuck here.
No, I'm sorry. I must have misspoken.
Or maybe I misheard you.
Not passing through.
Okay.
They're not passing through.
Okay. I thought that's what I heard. Okay.
Who live here.
Were they willing? Did they want help? Were they willing to get help? Did they want to get out of that situation?
Yeah, I think that there was, uh, I think there was consensus among them, uh, but for, uh, each of them, they had different barriers. Uh, some of them, uh, sort of described the life that they had before and, um, uh, some of them ha- have mistrust of agencies and programs uh, and, uh, have had any number of different, uh, experiences that have led them, uh, to where they are, that there did seem to be, uh, a willingness. And, um, uh, they certainly shared with us in a very frank way. So I will tell you that we don't have video, that I, that I, uh, approached them and determined that audio would be the best way to be able to, uh, capture that. So I've got from, uh, one of the groups, uh, I do have audio, maybe 20 minutes or so.
And Brett, what was the, about the age demographic and were they from Topeka area or did they migrate to Topeka and ended up staying here for, you said as much as two years?
Yeah, that's a good question. I did not get, um, residency span in terms of whether or not they were Topeka natives or Shawnee County natives. Uh, Sergeant Clam may have more information. He doesn't have that either. Okay. Yeah, that's sort of not information that we had. Again, when you think about, um, coming into a camp of individuals and wanting to ask questions, we asked what we felt like were general enough questions to get some good data, but obviously those types of questions probably come after relationship building over a period, over a period of time. Age-wise, I'd say anywhere from sort of late twenties, early thirties up through, um, fifties, maybe early sixties.
Okay. The reason I ask is, did any of them indicate that they may have relatives in Shawnee County, Topeka, that they've tried to get help from and they couldn't get help? You know, that's another resource. I'm just wondering.
Certainly. Yeah. Again, the questions we asked were pretty general, so we didn't ask anything about family from those individuals.
So if you had to say, I'm sorry.
I just said thank you.
Okay. If you had to say if they were homeless or not, or would that be yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
How many people did you speak with?
Uh, extensively, three. A total of, seven.
Out of what do we think we have homeless? Fifty-three? How many? Fifty-three? Were there children?
No children that we spoke with.
Okay. Thank you. Any more questions?
Yes, and Brett, and do you know, do we still have, uh, reported campsites on the west side of town or any place other than along Kansas, uh, the Kansas River?
We had some conversation about that with, uh, the task force and felt like that there were some, but that we don't have, uh, existing relationships through services or through law enforcement with those like we do, uh, the ones that we visit.
Okay, thank you.
Why is that?
I don't know. The question, I'm not prepared to answer.
Any more questions for Brett? Thank you.
Alright, thanks for your time.
Officer Clam, you like to report on anything that he's missed? What did your eyes see? From your perspective?
Yeah, I think part of the, the question on why don't we know on the west side, um, I, I believe there are camps on the west side. I just personally, I can tell you, I don't know where they're at. I'm told, for example, behind Menards and things of that nature. Um, however, majority of my career, I've worked central and north Topeka, um, so I'm pretty familiar with that area and I knew, um, exactly where a bunch of camps were. And so prior to our meeting with, uh, those individuals, I actually went out, um, either a couple of days or the week before and met with them and, and asked them if it'd be okay if I brought some individuals back to talk with them. So I'd already kind of set up some of the meetings that we, we went to last Friday. Um, but again, I knew exactly where I was going, whereas on the west side. Um, I think some of our outreach officers, uh, outreach with Valeo or the mission probably answered that question a little bit better as far as what's the west side. Um, the individuals that we talked to, uh, some of them are chronic homeless. Um, one of them, for example, um, he's been homeless for, for multiple years, has a pretty extensive camp. Um, down by the river, he's pretty, uh, built in, if you will. He has a pretty, um, elaborate camp, if you will. Um, and I, I'll be honest, I was a little surprised when we talked to him and asked him if there was a designated camping area, would he be interested in, in moving to that area? And he said yes. I actually, I told Brett, I didn't think we would. I was like, he's gonna be a more hardened one. I don't think we're gonna get much as far as cooperation. And, and I was a little surprised by that. He said that he, he would actually be one to consider. Um, some of the downsides that, uh, there was a little expressed is just, uh, being around other individuals, um, you know, other homeless. Cause what you'll see, at least in my experience, is that you'll have basically little tribes, little clusters of individuals who will camp together. Um, but there's often times they're interfighting between the, the, the tribes, if you will. Um, and so there, there's some of the concern expressed about that as far as having a campground, but the majority of them did express that they would be interested. If a, if a facility, if there's a nice place, facilities where they could shower, have running water, or at least a water spigot that they can get water, waterfront, they'd be very interested in that. So, yeah, is, so any other questions on the, on that? And then if you want, I can report on the other things you asked me to report on.
Sure, go ahead. You're there.
Um, so I was asked to report back on the homeless outreach officer and when, uh, that position is ready to up and go. Um, it is, it is ready now. I mean, I, I would say it's probably in effect, just the fact that I've been doing some of the homeless outreach. So with that being said, the way it will kind of look, as of right now, my team consists of myself and two officers. Um, and so what I'll end up doing is assigning, um, homeless outreach to one of my officers and, uh, right now until we get more manpower, it'll be a part-time position for them. So they'll still do their normal, uh, CIT stuff and then, um, once, one to three days a month, work on homeless outreach. Um, I did modify our current memo of understanding that we have with Valeo, uh, and I've submitted that through legal, um, just to get a more updated MOU for all the agencies that could be involved in this. Um, and so kind of just waiting back on that. Um, but as far as the actual outreach, uh, I'd say we're, we're, we're good to go. Um, like I said, and we've already been starting to do some of it. Um, I was also asked to report back on storage. So if a homeless individual is arrested, we, as far as the proposed ordinance has to hold their, uh, their camp or all their stuff for up to 90 days, then how would that look? Uh, the department is currently looking at a Conex box or like a large shipping container, which you see like on a large freighter, um, is what we're currently looking at and storing that out at the impound lot. As far as cost effectiveness, that's, that's kind of the best route we've came up with so far. And so we're exploring different options, different sizes, different costs of that. That's kind of what we're leaning.
Good job. Great report. Any questions for him?
I have one. Um, you expressed water as being a primary concern. How, and I'm maybe not getting, maybe I don't want to get too far into the weeds. How do they, uh, explain how they sustain themselves with food? Um, any kind of medical needs or anything like that? Where, where do they go to get those kinds of things?
So all the camps that we visited were within walking distance of the mission or within Let's Help. Um, so right now, what they, cause we asked the same thing, where do you get your water? And they said they go out and get it. Now, I, I don't remember. I didn't ask specifically, let's say they go to the mission to get it, or if they go down to the, the river and get water. But they said they go and get water and bring it back to their camps. Um, I am under the impression they get majority of their food from Let's Help and the mission, things of that nature, as long as they're allowed in the facilities. Um, cause they're, again, they're all within walking distance. Um, and they talked about a couple of different places that they can shower on occasion. Again, it's all within, uh, a walking distance from them.
Okay, thank you.
They also get their help from Let's Help. Um, they also get their help, our food from, um, um, it's on Sunday on 501 Jackson.
At Harvester's?
No, it's, it's a super, Super Sunday or Super, Super Sunday. That's what they call it.
Silverbacks?
Silverbacks, yeah. They feed whoever wants to come in there. They come in there. And I've even seen them at, um, Salvation Army. These people know where to go. Topeka is a giving city and they know where to go and they know where to get that food. And, um, with all the silverbacks that are at the different recreation centers, they take their kids there. They'll give them food to, to move on. And I think, is it, is it Catholic charities that hands out sack bags? Is that Catholic charity? So that's even next to Let's Help and they give out a bag with a sandwich and apples and, um, and so, so they're, they're not, they're not hurting for food. They're, they're not. They're, um, and, and, um, not to take any way, thing away from the mission, cause the mission doesn't turn too many people down. Um, but yeah, yes. First, I want to apologize for being late. Dang city detours. Um, do you think the people that you talked to is a good representation of the entire population out there? The 53 other people or the 50 other people?
Probably. I mean, when I went out the week before, um, trying to set up these appointments, I spoke with a few more, uh, unsheltered individuals that we weren't able to meet up with on Friday. Um, they, they expressed all similar interests and concerns. Um, so I would say total, just personally with, let's say the seven that we met, I think I met with an additional, three to four when I went out the, the week prior. And, and again, it was very similar. They'd be interested if there was a, a camping site or somewhere they could legally go to and they had commodities that interested them. Um, they were interested in services to some degree. Um, but kind of like what Brett said, they each have their own, their own barriers. Um, but I mean, I'd say it's a, it's a decent cross set. It'd be interesting if we did a, a, a better, more in-depth survey of the unsheltered. I think that would provide a lot of information. They, at least the groups that we found were very willing to speak with us. Um, and so we were able to learn quite a bit. Um, but again, we're talking about less than 20 when we were somewhere between, you know, was, was the number 50, 70, something like that.
And I, I'm really glad to look at that, that you're looking at that designated place. I had met with Tawny, um, last week sometime. And she had asked me, how are we gonna solve this? I said, you, the only way to solve it is to have a designated place. So then you aren't saying, no, you can't camp here. No, you can't do this. No, but you can, you know, instead of saying the no, just say, hey, you know where you can camp is out there. So I think that's more inviting than setting up a bunch of no, 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 no. We have a yes.
And just to expand on a little bit further, I had a meeting with, uh, Barry just, uh, yesterday or the day before, uh, talking about, uh, you know, an outdoor camping area, um, on some land that I thought the mission owned. Um, it's a little unclear on the, uh, County Praiser website as far as if the mission owns it or who exactly owns it. But with that being said, um, I kind of talked with Barry about some of that and I kind of typed up a little proposal on some of my ideas. And, uh, he said that it was definitely worth exploring further, um, that the mission would be interested in at least having conversation about having an outdoor camping area. Um, uh, you know, and I want to, I don't want to speak for Barry, but there, there were some concerns, you know, what, what kind of rules it would be having placed, who would actually run it? Things of that nature, which are all conversations that, uh, I think would be good for everybody to have in the future, but, uh, um, definitely possibilities there.
And, and I agreed to a point. I mean, I still think it's a city problem. I think Barry could be a, Barry have a lot of information to give us. But I don't want, I don't want this to be something we talk about for three or four years, you know?
Agreed, agreed. And if I could add one more thing, one of the things, uh, one of the barriers that I talked about, or at least I asked them during the individuals, is how many of them had ID? Um, and out of the group, at least when I was there before with Brett, only one individual out of the, I don't know, seven, 10, however many I spoke to, only one individual had ID. Um, so asking, you know, what, what makes it so difficult to get ID? And it's because you have to have ID to get ID basically. You have to have ID to get a, a copy of your birth certificate or, um, a copy of your, uh, social security card. And then to get a cop, to get an ID card, you have to have like your birth certificate. So you need ID to get ID, which makes it very difficult. And also in the state of Kansas, you have to have a permanent residence or an address to put down to get a Kansas ID card. Uh, which again, makes it very difficult for our unsheltered. Um, I went to a training, um, in Kansas City where I got to talk with the Houston Police Department's homeless outreach team. They have a full-time team. And this is something they came up with, so I kind of put together a little draft if I could hand some of these up.
Thank you.
Do we know this guy? Pretty good picture there.
He's kind of sketchy.
There are a lot of them though.
Yeah.
So they refer to this as an identification letter. And so what they did in Houston is basically the police department would verify the, the identification of somebody. I mean, it could be through the different, uh, records that we have, you know, prison, whatever the case is, those are different databases that we have access to. If we can positively ID the individual, um, the sergeant of that unit would draft a letter, put their picture on it, laminate it for the individual and, and give it to them. And at least in Texas, um, they were able to use this to get a birth certificate, to get a social security card. And so that made it easier for them to get actual, uh, state IDs and along that nature. So this is very preliminary. I just drafted this, uh, late last week. Um, so I have a lot more conversations to have with individuals. I stopped by the DMV and had some conversations with them. Um, I haven't made it as far as social security or the vital statistics yet, but, um, that's something we have in the, in very near future. Um, so I'm hoping that we could do something very similar to, uh, you know, to what Houston's doing here, um, drafting these type of letters that helps our unsheltered get some, a positive identification. Um, you know, if something happens to them, you know, and we need to identify them, whether they're injured, something like this, this will help out greatly. Also, if they encounter law enforcement, um, it gets very difficult. If I can, let's say you could get a citation if I knew who you are versus arrest. You know, now I have ID that, that they would, the police could at least use. Um, so there's lots of things that I think would be very beneficial for. So I just kind of wanted to, uh, let you guys know that was just another side project of the homeless outreach team that we're working on. So I can stand for any questions if anybody has any.
Well, I'm gonna hand this to legal. I don't know which way it goes. I'll, I'll hand that to legal to see if we can do something like that. I'm sure we can. So they can start drafting that. I think that's a great idea. But let me say this, um, if they have had social services, they can come to the DCF office and ask for ID and get a copy of their birth certificate if we have it on file.
Okay.
They're privy to that and it's free.
Awesome.
They're privy to their, uh, social security card. If they don't know their number or their card, whatever we have in their file, if they've had that, whether they have food benefits, sleep benefits or whatever, we can give that to them for free. They just have to come. And, um, it's, it's kind of weird how we do it, cause we, to identify who they are, it's kind of weird how we do it. We have one person do it and another person print it. But they have, because they probably know, you know, some of like their birth date or their kid's estate or something like that. But if we have those on file, they can come and get it.
Good deal.
Okay. So I wanted to say that while I was thinking about that. Any, any more questions? Thank you for doing your homework and thank you for doing your homework homework. So appreciate that. That's, that's awesome. Um, to, and I don't know who wants to answer this, how long will it take for us to do the MOU? Do we need another 30 days or do we have something now?
Well, I have the draft of the MOU and all it does is just modify an existing MOU to add some language into it about, an outreach team. So it, it's not gonna take a week or two.
Okay.
Finish that up.
Okay. I'm ju- I'm just wondering if we can look at it now, but you're saying it's not ready, basically.
No, Sergeant Clam, he put the suggested language into it to modify it. He sent it to me for legal review. And once I finish it, then it will go up the chain of command.
Right.
Uh, for approval.
Not ready. I'm gonna put, not ready yet. So I'll put, I'm just, there's a lot of things I gotta keep up with, so that's why I'm asking. Okay. Not, not trying to rush you guys, just trying to keep up with it all. Al- also, um, if you can send me your team, their name, um, their hours and their, um, contact information, if you can send it to, uh, our secretary, Liz over there. So we have that for our minutes and we actually have that. So we'll know. Okay. So, um, that's great. Okay, um, I was, I heard that there's somebody from Stormont. Did you want to speak on what you seen that day or any of your feelings? Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
Hi, my name is Mary Tibbetts and I do work for Stormont Vale Health. And some of the things I was specifically asking them about, um, has to do with their general health and how they access healthcare services, which I didn't really get an impression from them that they do access healthcare services. But that's not probably real high on their agenda. I did give the, I, I informed them about Grace Med, our federally qualified health center and the brand new clinic that they just opened and that because of their situation and, and I was there and could witness that they are in fact homeless, um, that I could write a letter for them on agency letterhead or, um, another social service agency could do that and they could access free healthcare through Grace Med. I, because that's true. They have a homeless, uh, grant, uh, program through Grace Med. And I wanted to make sure they knew that, 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 you know, they didn't have to go to the emergency department, um, that they could, we, I would even assist them. I gave them my business card and let them know I could try to direct them. Uh, but it, it didn't seem to be a real high priority to them. Um, one of them did, uh, say he had health insurance. Uh, the other two, I, I got the impression that they did not. They didn't offer that they did. One of them for sure did not. Um, so those were my impressions and, and that's pretty standard across the board with, um, other homeless individuals that I've worked with. That a lot of times healthcare is only a priority when there's an acute episode going on and they're therefore, you know, in the emergency department or hospitalized. And so those were my impressions.
Okay. Any questions for Mary? Mary, if you can make sure that Liz has all your contact information, so we know who to direct them to for that letter, that would be great. I appreciate that.
Sure.
Um, because I think it will be, uh, we will be giving them that information or do you, also do you hand out flyers or any pamphlets?
I did give them brochures for Grace Med to make sure that they know about the clinic services that are available to them.
And look, okay. And if we can get that as well, that would be great to put in our packet.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Do you have anything else for us?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. Alright, who else was out there? Nobody else? Okay, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go down my list here. Um, city legal, update and report on anything they may. City legal, update and report on anything they may deem necessary. Other than you're working on the MOU and then I just gave you the. Identification packet or letter.
The only thing I would really comment on was the issue of the campground. That's an alternative to. In the legal framework of emergency shelter. A bed for somebody to have for the night, a campground is an alternative way of doing that. If we decide to go that way, if the committee does, give some thought to how you're going to maintain it and clean it. Because there have been cities that have tried that and very quickly shut it back down again because. It has sanitation issues.
Okay.
But it it can work.
Okay. Thank you, and Corey, if you could get us as much information on those campgrounds, I mean, this is just being brought to us, I'd like to get on to see those places or see videos or whatever. I think, was there a link on one? Whatever links you have, I think that would be beneficial for us to look at. Speaker Rescue Mission, report any detail or proposed programs? Do you have anything to report? Nope. Yes.
I would like to say, after he said, you know, Barry wanted to talk about this and had some concerns, that probably now's the time he needs to do that. Is he on the task force? No.
Isn't somebody from there though? Yeah. Yeah.
Well, because he said he wanted, had some things he wanted to talk about and bring up, now's the time, we don't want to go through all this and then he he said, oh, by the way.
Frank, if you can relay a message to Barry for me and I will also have Liz follow up as well, if we can ask Barry to come to our next meeting to present whatever questions or concerns that he has, that'd be great. Thank you.
Because we talked about it in the subcommittee and when I looked on. The the website, you know, looking at different land available, I saw stuff that looked like it belonged to the mission and so I just, I just reached out to him saying, hey, I'd like to talk to you about this, so. I mean, I only brought it to him, I I I think it was on Friday afternoon.
That's good, that's okay.
So just so you know, like, I mean, it's, it's not that he's skipping out, I just took it to him on Friday, so he probably doesn't know.
Well, I'm gonna let him know he's skipping out, we've had two meetings, he needs to be at the third, tell him to skip in, Frank, okay? Yeah, tell him to skip in, I'll call him. Corey, with the homeless task force, I appreciate your report. I do see on here, it says discussion might be warranted, further discussion, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you guys some more time to do that, okay? It's some pretty good stuff that you guys brought here. And also can you reach out to? Intercity Transit, I know that's, is that still intercity transit, the bus? Speaker Metro, see, that's how long I've been riding the bus. Can you reach out to? Oh, what's her name? Susan Duffy, I was thinking of her husband's name, Susan Duffy? And tell her what we're doing, tell her I asked you to call her and see how she can help us. Okay? Okay, that's great. Invitation for community action? Community action here? Did they get, did they get notified that we were having this meeting, okay, thank you, we'll notify them again. Did we get anything from the task force regarding the number of beds and caring shelters, did we discuss anything like that? Are we, did we get any other volunteers for caring shelters?
So the committee. I mean, I think the main issue with. People wanting to participate is funding. So I think the committee has all, we have a lot of great ideas and. It's funding that is the issue. I know that myself and possibly Mary Tibbetts from Stormont Vale will be going to visit some rest, medical respite. Because the hospital does house a lot of people that leave into homelessness, so we're going to go to another community who has a few medical respite and. Tour that to see how, what that looks like. It could be possible that some of that is Medicaid eligible where we could bill. So those are the things that we'll learn at that conference, but as far as any other different shelters, the only thing we really came up with was this transitional. Campground for the homeless and then, you know, the idea really was, I I'm certainly not convinced that all street homeless people don't want services, so I'm, I. Call me fluffy, I don't know, but. I think if we have them in an area and we develop a relationship like Sergeant Clem is already doing, then we could really try to get people into services if they're in one designated area, so.
I don't want to stop because we don't have funding, I want us to look to see where there's beds and shelters and who would be available to do that. Because we're gonna get some funding, we're we're gonna work on this and I think that there's enough people. I I know that's been holding the task force back, but we're ready to move forward, so we've got to find some funding. And we've got to find some private sectors, so that's city manager's job over there, so he's he's writing down already, see, so. We want to move forward, we've got funding, let's move forward and see what they, what they would look at at night or or or, you know, what kind of discount, let's let's move forward, okay?
Okay.
And then let us remember whether it's a felon or a juvenile or runaway or whatever. Because, you know, all think across the board. Okay?
Okay.
All right, so I'll look for you to. To come back with a report on that.
Okay.
Finance, is somebody here from finance, from the city of Topeka? Mr. Gerber's not here, he was to follow up if an account could be set up, city manager, do you know? So that donations can be put in that account.
I'm not aware as to what was determined.
I asked Mr. Gerber and the city finance department to follow up to see if an account could be set up to receive donations. If it's not possible, other ideas that could be done. Okay, thank you. Jump, is anybody from Jump here? Okay, we'll get ahold of them. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Do you have nothing more, to follow up with the definition that specifically affordable housing means, did you come back with a definition for me? Okay, okay. Sergeant Clem gave his report and homeless task force will provide update on organization that would provide. Medical assistance, right, Corey? As needed. And and I'll tell you what, in Chesney, this is why it's so good that we're all here at the table. Chesney, they have. And that's another resource. They, what they've done is they've gone, Chesney NIA, Chesney Park NIA, they've gone to. Stormont and they've got their nurses and they go over to Chesney and I know it's one or two times Fridays out. Of the month and they're, they sit there with that big bus and anybody can come in and it's our Stormont Vale. Nurses, our students, and they take their blood pressure and they, you know, what, you know, they give them, you know, tell them where to go, you know, give them different advice. They check for their their levels for diabetes and it's it's amazing how many people go over there, all over the city that go over there that know about it, just, just, they're not feeling well. You know, so they go over there and that might be another resource for us and then they can give out the Grace Med, you know, information since it's right in that area, but that's another resource. For nurses that that can come or that we could use for free. Okay, I have Lisa and Luther expanded on the research that has been completed, that's what we seen last week, right? Okay, all right. Again, I I've said this before and I'll say it again, this is something that we're not going to be able to do overnight. But I'm glad to see everybody at the table that's willing to put their input in and all of our minds and resources. So that we can, we can. Make this successful and also get them the help that they need. I think that's the committee's goal, so. If you're looking for one meeting and it's done, it's it's just doesn't gonna happen. I know that Mr. Padilla, Councilman Padilla had a suggestion as well, that he wanted to ask legal.
Oh. Yes. Earlier I was visiting and talking about certain areas where we have had in the past reports of camping, like underneath the the bridges. In close proximity to the no-tow area and then receiving emails, I do, and I'm sure others have, about. People in those areas approaching. Attendees to the no-tow events and so forth, asking them, are you gonna eat all that food, you need, what are you gonna do with that food, you know? Basically trying to get some attention and resources and stuff like that. And in those areas like that, are those city-owned properties and can those be? Designated as no camping area so that, again. Not with the idea of of arresting anybody, but saying, this isn't the location for you to. To camp at, if we're going to consider a designated area, then we can give them that designated area and move them from those other areas that. Are higher visibility that had come to our attention.
Are you talking about that area over there just north of the river on Kansas Avenue, the Veterans Park? Yeah, I'm familiar with that and actually did fair amount of research on that, because we had a question about, we have an existing ordinance about not being able to be in the park after hours from eleven to six, I think it is. And the question came up, is that area included within that? And as it turns out, it's not. We pulled the legal description on Veterans Park when it was transferred to the county and had it mapped and there is a little strip. That is actually right underneath the bridge that is not part of the park, it's a city easement. It it's not included in the park, is the short answer, so those hours would not apply to that. However, if this camping ordinance were to pass, it would apply and people would not be able to camp under that bridge like that. But as it is right now, there's not much that can be done about it since it's not technically part of the park.
Understand, right now then, on any city easement, can they camp?
Currently, yes.
Okay. It's kind of surprising. I mean, it seems like we restrict signs and other issues and things along easement, but camping doesn't apply in that area.
Well. It it comes down to an issue of public property versus private property, if it's a private property, then the landowner could request that the person leave. Basically it's a trespass issue. If it's public property, though, we don't have any mechanism right now to. Make that person move. So they're they're able to camp wherever they'd like, it's public property.
Yeah, I just think in line with what's been suggested, we talked about a designated area. I think. If there's an effort to do that, then we need to do as much as we can to direct folks to that area to make it. Something that they want to go to rather than where they are choosing to camp now. So I I was, I was just curious why currently we didn't have anything on the books that made camping on the easement undesirable or illegal. Okay. Another thought I might have, if I may, listening to some of the ideas that have come up, some from you, Madam Chair, and from Ms. Tibbetts and Sergeant Clem. When you talk to the individuals out there, do they seem pretty, you know, being able to access food and water, because they know where to go on those other things? But like being able to access, like you said, identification, something that they can go through that process or Ms. Tibbetts, the information that they have for Grace Med and those kinds of things. Do they seem aware of those resources and how to access them because, you know, along with this ID thing, which I think is a pretty good idea. But if you had. Contact with the homeless and were able to provide to them, I don't know, it sounds silly maybe, a laminated card, something that is durable and lasts and say, if you need this, this is where you go. You need this, this is who you can contact. Because. I'm thinking that. Keeping track of brochures and stuff might be difficult when you're living in a tent, but if you had something you kept in your pocket or something with you all the time that helped you remember these resources, again, I think. It seems like the conversation is not about moving them from homeless. To a permanent residence, as it is while they're homeless, make sure they're getting the care they need so that they don't get hurt, so they don't. Fall into some despair or something like that, that's what it seems to me like the conversation is about.
I think the card's a good idea to laminate that, I think that they do have a good, a good understanding where to get specific resources, at least on their hierarchy of needs, like for, like the councilwoman said, like they know where to get food, they know where to get water. Healthcare, kind of like Mary's talking about, not the highest. You know, necessity to them at this point, so I think that they they may or may not understand those services, I think most of them understand that how they are supposed to get ID, but because. Of the roadblocks ahead of them, they're having a lot of issues as far as that goes. So I think we could easily put a card together and laminate it so that that resource is available to them, but one of the issues that that we run into. Out of the, all the individuals we talked to, I only know of one of them that has a cellphone. And then the flip side is as if they do have a cellphone, where do they charge it, and I don't know that answer, I I get texts from one of the gentlemen on a on a quasi-regular basis. But I I think they're pretty resourceful for the most part, they know what resources are available in in the big scheme of things, because they do want to do some things. You know, like talking about ID, there's one of the gentleman that wants to come actually address the city council at one of the open meetings, but he has complained he's not allowed because he doesn't have any ID. And things of that nature, so he knows what he has to do to do, he knows what he needs to do the things that he wants, but he just can't get there because of some of the roadblocks. That are, that are, that are ahead of him. So, but but as far as putting ID together, I think we can do that pretty easily.
Thank you.
And I, I think, you know, Mike, sometimes if we give them the help that they need, maybe they can feel better or do better and then get on permanency resident, you know, that's kind of how I see it.
You know, and if I could, one more thing, when we talk about the resources, let's just say, for example, we had the designated camping area. And let's just say, for example, we had thirty individuals staying there, I do think it'd be a lot easier for all the resources in Topeka to then be able to reach that unsheltered because, because right now we have camps spread all over the city. And so we have amazing people who go out onto the street on a regular basis and tries to outreach these individuals, whereas if we had a large number in a designated place, I do think it would be easier for resources to go to them instead of. You know, do you know how to go, come to, come to find resources, these resources can reach out to them, be a lot easier, so that would be a bonus if we had a designated place as well. Just wanted to throw that out there.
Officer Clem, you're, you're, you're passionate about that, we see that. Okay, is there anybody else that would like to address the council before we adjourn? Anybody else that's here in the audience that would like to step forward, that has something they'd like to either bring to us or? Comment? No? Okay, staff? So what I'm gonna do is let everybody have some more time to do some extra study time and get back with me. And I'll probably set another meeting, probably because the task force meets the second. Second Wednesday, so I'll do it probably maybe the third, third week in September. There's nothing else, we thank everybody, please make sure your contact information is correct and we have your phone or your email, thank you, this meeting's adjourned.